Good afternoon, welcome to the May 3, 2023, meeting of the Oceanside City Council. I'd like to go ahead and get started with roll call.
Mayor Sanchez.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Keim. Councilmember Joyce.
Present.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Weiss.
If we could have Dr. Kadri Webb, please pass step forward. Thank you, and please, everyone, stand for the invocation. Thank you very much for being here today.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council.
Pastor Webb.
Every head is bowed, every eye closed, thou pray in my faith tradition. Gracious and loving God, we gather tonight as the people of Oceanside, humanity, mankind, and womankind, men, women, boys, and girls. If someone needs hollow walls of justice to do the work of justice, our prayer this evening is simple. Let justice roll down like waters, righteousness as a mighty stream. May your Holy Spirit speak to every elected official's heart and every constituent's heart, and may your precious Spirit guide every conscience and every decision made at the hands of representatives of our community. May our egos be erased, and may every elected official do unto others as they would have someone do unto them. Guide all of us, dear Oceanside, into a place of hope and a brighter future in our beloved Oceanside. In the name of Christ we pray, amen.
Amen. Please remain standing, and Councilmember Joyce, if you would lead us in the Pledge of Legits.
Ready, begin.
The Pledge of Legits.
Thank you, you may be seated, please. And we're going to begin with the Mayor's Business Spotlight with Kevin Shin. We've got Scott Ashton from the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce here, and this is truly a partnership in doing the Mayor's Spotlight on Businesses. And we all just saw Kevin at the first annual of Asia-Pacific Islander Festival that we had on Saturday, that had, I don't know, how many thousands of people? Lots and lots of people. But we do have this, and we do have this to give to Kevin in honor of the many things that he's doing with his business, with the community. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate the opportunity to recognize Kevin. Kevin is one of the most dedicated and resilient businesspeople that I've ever met. As some of you may know, he opened his restaurant, The Switchboard, at probably the worst possible time, in March of 2020. But that didn't deter him from opening additional businesses, like North County Roastery and Canvas, and he's still going. I don't think he's going to stop. So there's a lot I could say about Kevin, but I just want to recognize two specific things. As the Mayor mentioned, the significant role he played in bringing the API Festival to Oceanside this past weekend. There was obviously a very much pent-up demand for such an event, and the turnout was incredible. So really appreciate you and your team for all you did. But I also, most of you do not know that Kevin was also very instrumental in helping the chamber create its first-ever Oceanside Leadership Academy, which is currently running and will be running again in the fall. So Kevin was part of the leadership team in creating that, and we are just really grateful for your dedication to our business community.
Thanks, guys. I was, back in 1997, one of those lost Marines walking down the street with my pack, not knowing what to do. And it's just amazing to see how much change has taken place in the city. And opening the business in 2020, you had to rely on the community. So when you guys had helped support me, I wanted to do whatever I could to support back. And I just feel like it's been this constant battle and competition, who's going to support who more. So I will keep doing what I can do to help this community, and as long as you guys like Hawaiian and Korean food. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. We have a picture here. Thank you, congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have National Water Safety Month 2023. Amanda Gonzalez, our newest, one of our newest department heads from Parks and Recreation Department, and he's going to let us know who else is with him for this proclamation.
Thank you, it's an honor to be here. Water Safety Month is so important. Back in 2009, Ruth Brenner did a study that linked the efficacy of swim lessons with reduced risk of drowning. So we know that when children participate in formal swim lessons, they have an 88% reduced risk of drowning. So that, we're very proud of the aquatic programs that we offer through the Parks and Recreation Department. And then we're also very proud of our relationship with lifeguard services and the safety that they provide on the beaches. So I'd like to pass it on to Amanda, our aquatics administrator, to introduce our Parks and Rec team, and then to the lifeguards.
Hello, my name is Amanda. I am in charge of all three aquatic facilities for the city, and we also have a surf camp that we run in the summertime. This is one of our supervisors, his name is Philip. We have Alex, she is our go-to person for, she's our professional assistant and does most of our lane rentals. We have Hannah, she is one of our aquatic technicians. We have Mark, who is an acting supervisor right now, while we have another supervisor on maternity leave. And then we have Shane, who is also one of our aquatic technicians. Our registration for summer 2023 begins on Monday, May 8, at 8:00 a.m. If you haven't already got your profile set in our active net system, please feel free to give us a call at the Aquatic Center or go online, and you can do it yourself.
I'm Tyler Berry, Beach Lifeguard Lieutenant.
I'm Dani, Beach Lifeguard Sergeant.
Jonathan Chasner, Beach Lifeguard Sergeant.
Fire Chief David Parsons.
And I'm Lola Swank, Lifeguard Sergeant, and I'm also the Junior Lifeguard Coordinator down at the beach, and we are honored to be a part of this celebration and recognition of National Water Safety Month. Our priorities are, and will be this month, is to ensure water safety for all visitors and pool swimmers, and to ensure swimming at all levels and everyone's a swimmer, and to educate people on water safety to be safer swimmers, and to maintain sustainable lifeguards. Thank you very much.
Fantastic, and we do have a proclamation, and there are several whereas's, the most important, whereas City of Oceanside is a leader in drowning prevention by offering affordable swim lessons to 3,548 children and adults, and providing safe aquatic recreational opportunities to 138,747 people at its three aquatics facilities last year. And whereas last year, big number here, 3,78,624 people visited Oceanside beaches, with 1,343,963 entering the water. Can you imagine managing that many people in the water? And City of Oceanside lifeguards took 22,146 preventative actions, made 2,190 ocean rescues, responded to 1,576 minor medical aides, and performed 39 boat rescues, had 310 EMS responses with Oceanside Fire Department, performed 75,929 safe swim and surf area enforcements, and 10,000, not finished yet here, 10,770 law education enforcements. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Esther Sanchez, on behalf of the City of Oceanside, do hereby proclaim May 2023 as Water Safety Month in the City of Oceanside with great appreciation to Oceanside Parks and Recreation Department and Oceanside Lifeguard Service, and urge all residents to participate in water safety education, and thereby safely enjoy our city's wonderful water recreational facilities and coastal resources. So thank you, Manny, I'm going to go ahead and give this to you. Thank you, and we're going to have a picture here, but isn't this fantastic? It is just so fantastic. Maybe we can crunch a little more? Well, it's got to be this big team, right? Otherwise, how can we handle that many people, right? Well, thank you, thank you all for your wonderful service, and for really making it possible for so many people to enjoy our water resources. Thank you, thank you. Next, we have a proclamation in honor of National Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month 2023, and we have several people, if you would please come on down. We have Dori Harris from the, from FACO. We have some of our Samoan pastors in the house as well, come on down. We have Kevin Shin, please come on down. We have Joe Talau. Donald Yasukuchi. Did I say Joe? Yes, I did. Valley Joe, right? And this is just a few of the leadership that we have in our community, a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful community. So here we go. I'm going to go ahead and hand the mic to, so you can introduce yourselves and then do the proclamation, starting with you.
Good evening, I'm Pastor Longi from Graceful Gospel here in the City of Oceanside. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Joe Talau, Community Mentor, City of Oceanside for high-risk probation youth. Excuse my attire, I just got off a football game, our first loss. I didn't know we were supposed to come in with collars, shirts, but I'm thankful.
Thank you.
Kevin Shin, you guys just saw me switchboard and then created the API Festival with a bunch of great individuals.
Hello, Dori Harris, President of the Filipino-American Cultural Organization.
Hello, good evening, Jonathan Inouye, the Executive Secretary of the Filipino-American Cultural Organization.
Hello, my name is Rosemary Peralta, and I'm one of the Advisory Committee members.
Hi, I'm Alu Hamto, one of the Board of Director of Filipino-American Cultural Organization.
I am Donald Yasukuchi, owner of Yasukuchi Family Farms, and I run Oceanside Finest Basketball Program.
Okay, you're probably wondering why these fantastic people are here. Well, it's because this is National Asian American and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And whereas, and the initials of you, if you don't want to say all of that, is AANHPI. Whereas AANHPI individuals and communities have endured a long history of injustice in our country, including the Page Act of 1875, the Chinese Exclusion Act of 1882, the incarceration of Japanese-American citizens during World War II, the targeting of South Asian Americans, especially those who are Muslim, Hindu, or Sikh, after the national tragedy of 9/11, and most recently, the wave of hate and violence against AANHPI individuals and people based unjustly on the COVID-19 pandemic hysteria. And whereas in a difficult year of pain and fear, we reflect on the tradition of leadership, resilience, and courage shown by AANHPI people who helped build, lead, and unite our country throughout history, from laying railroad tracks, tilling fields, running businesses, being farmers, scientists and professors, to caring for our loved ones by being doctors, nurses, and healthcare workers, including recently during the COVID-19 pandemic, serving at great risk and much personal and family sacrifice, as well as serving our nation in uniform and in many other professions, and as volunteers. And whereas AANHPI people in Oceanside have a long history of service to our city and country, especially serving at our neighboring military installations at Camp Pendleton in San Diego, infusing our community with their many wonderful contributions and cultural activities that add to our city's rich diversity and economic success, celebrated every year through our annual cultural celebrations, such as Filipino-American Cultural Celebration under the leadership of FACO and President Dori Harris, Annual Samoan Cultural Celebration, and most recently, our city's first annual Asian-Pacific Islander Festival with Umeke and Kevin Shin, and other civic and cultural activities and institutions, such as Samoan churches and their pastors, community heroes such as Junior Seao, Wayne Godinay's cup-stacking demonstrations and tournaments, America's Finest with founder Donald Yasukuchi, which provides access to low-income youth to sports, the arts, and educational achievement, and mentoring programs such as Save Our Streets and Resilience. At you, Joe Talau, representing all, representing all, all of these leaders and people here in Oceanside, giving so much back to our community, and serving as leaders and support for our youth. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Sanchez, on behalf of the City of Oceanside, do hereby proclaim May 2023 as National Asian American and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month in the City of Oceanside, and ask all residents to join us in celebrating AANHPI history, achievements, leadership, contributions, and challenges with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities, demonstrating our love and support for our fellow Americans who have given and give so much to our community. This is down. So would anyone like to say a few words?
Thank you, appreciate it, man, it just takes a community. I mean, I was, just like Guy shared, back in 97, I was a local guy that was lost, until I saw the light at the end of the tunnel. And you know, whatever I went through, I'm able to hear to help out the next generation. From all the obstacles and life trials that I went through, be able to help out the next generation. So I'm grateful and thankful, and I love my city, Oceanside, California.
I just want to say thank you, Mayor and City Council, for the work that you continue to do for the City of Oceanside. I'm here as representative of all the pastoral staff in the City of, in the community of, Samoan community. We want to extend our thank you and our thanksgiving to you guys for the continued work that you guys continue to do for the City of Oceanside. God bless.
Thank you, and within Oceanside, and I believe Vista, we have about 12 Samoan churches. That's a big deal, right? Anyone else? Yes.
On behalf of FACO, the Filipino-American Cultural Organization, we would like to thank you personally and for supporting us, and also the other group. And next month, we will be celebrating our 46th year of existence here in Oceanside, the Filipino event, that will be on June 10, and all of you are invited to watch this fabulous event. And also, we got a lot of surprises sold for the City of Oceanside.
My family's been in Oceanside since 1929, and we've been farming, and Oceanside's given us the opportunity to stay in business and continue to grow. So very grateful, very grateful for the city supporting us in our youth programs, and just want to continue, so very grateful, thank you.
I just want to say a couple things real quick, that's a little bit different, I suppose. You know, when I first came in here, I got to get to know a lot of the city, and there was two individuals that I met, one CJ Demento, Maria Mingalone, they definitely were spearheads with creating the cultural district here for the City of Oceanside, and it's the one of 14 that exists in the city or in the state. And one thing that you realize is that it takes us to create that culture around here, and we just wanted to help demonstrate that. You know, I'm learning a lot from, I'm not going to say elders, because I'm going to get smacked by my aunties, but some of the great things that we recognize here is that there's really no other city that could, I think, in the North County area that could create this type of environment. And instead of going out and saying why we're all so different, and spending the last decade of talking about why we should all end up hating each other, I think this is a testament of why we all need to love each other, and we all seem a little bit different, but honestly, who cares? We just realize that life is short, let's just celebrate who we all are.
Thank you, and I've actually known Donald for about 25 years, and he has, and I don't know when you actually started, Donald, probably even before that, but working for our community, working for our kids, starting at the Boys and Girls Club, and just, you just continue. So, and I know you want your dream gym, right? So we'll have to get to that too, right? But thank you so much, and we're going to take a picture. Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, not, last but not least, you all probably saw that we have royalty in the house, right? Let's bring on down our royalty, come on down, Miss Oceanside and her court, and Miss Teen Oceanside and her court. And this couldn't be made possible without the Sea Lions Club, right? We've got, we've got several people here. And you know, the way, the way this is done is, this is not the new court, this is not 2023, this is 2022, so they get honored at the end of their service to the community. So they have spent this whole year at all of these events, and really, really shining for us all. So I do want to do the proclamation, and got one for every one of the courts, and even one for Pam. And it's short. It's proclamation in honor of Miss Oceanside 2022, Miss Teen Oceanside 2022, and their princesses. Miss Oceanside is Rebecca Casanova. Miss Oceanside, yeah! Raise your hand proudly, yeah! Or maybe do that pivot, right? Miss Oceanside princesses Andrea Barber, Emily Didik-Tinan, Arlette Martinez. We got family in the house. Miss Teen Oceanside, Senna Zimmerman. Miss Teen Oceanside princesses Lily Teta, Gabriela Kakano Walski. It's a close. And Sabrina Zari. Yeah. So whereas Oceanside Sea Lions was chartered in 1968 and established the Miss Oceanside and Miss Teen Oceanside Scholarship Pageant in 1981, and whereas Miss Oceanside and Miss Teen Oceanside and their princesses attend El Camino High School, Oceanside High, Rancho Guanavista, Maricosta College, and Palomar College, and whereas they are very involved in community services and have attended numerous events such as the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce Business Mixers, ribbon-cutting ceremonies for new businesses and anniversaries, Oceanside Turkey Trot, you saw them, you know, running with their crowns on, yeah. Heritage Park Chili Cookoff, Oceanside Film Festival, Oceanside Sea Lions Bowl for the Blind, and golf tournament fundraisers, Oceanside Harbor Days, Muscles on Main Car Show, KOC anniversary celebrations, and many other city events. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Sanchez, on behalf of the City of Oceanside, do hereby proclaim our city's sincere appreciation to Miss Oceanside 2022, Miss Teen Oceanside 2022, and their princesses for their voluntary efforts and grateful thank, and gratefully thank them for representing our city this past year as phenomenal ambassadors of the City of Oceanside. Thank you.
Our pageant is going to be on May 13 at the Star Theater at 6 o'clock, we hope all of you can attend. All the money we raise from our pageant goes to scholarships for the winners, and the rest goes to nonprofits with an emphasis on sight, diabetes, childhood cancer, hunger, and the environment. We're also looking for new members always as well, so this will be our 55th year of the Oceanside Sea Lions, and we've been doing this pageant since 1981. That's it, thank you.
So do any of you want to say something? Yes, okay. This is not a test.
Hi, guys, thanks, it's been so fun being Miss Oceanside, definitely something I'll remember for the rest of my life. It's hard not to love this city, and I'm really honored to be able to represent it amongst these amazing women, thank you.
Hi, I just really want to say that I'm so thankful to be a part of this wonderful city, and I thank you so much, Mayor, for this day, and I just want to say thank you so much to all of these ladies, it feels like sisterhood, so thank you, Pam, for a lot that you do, thank you.
Okay, without further ado, let's take it, have a picture.
You can go in the middle.
Okay. Okay, Susette is the director, okay? So she tells us where to stand and what to do. So what do you want me?
Mayor, you want to be here?
Okay.
Well, I'm kind of, you know, I mean, they're making a sign because, oh, I'm bringing it down.
Thank you, congratulations on your service, and just, you know, good luck in your endeavors, thank you so much, thank you. So we did not have a closed session report, so next on the agenda are consent calendar items, items 3 through 19.
Move approval.
Is there any request from the public to speak on any items?
We have requests to speak on items 11, 16, and
And we do have a presentation, I think less than five minutes, on number 11, 16 and 19. So we have a motion in the second for the balance, is that correct? Okay, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Okay, item number 11. We have a staff presentation, I believe there's five slides, and a less than five-minute presentation. We have a staff presentation. I believe there's five slides and a less than five-minute presentation. Who are the, how many speakers on this item?
We have two speakers on this item.
All right, I will keep this short and sweet. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Vicky Gutierrez. I'm the real estate manager for the Public Works Department Property Management Division. And the item before you is Amendment Three to the property lease agreement with the YMCA of San Diego County at the Jim Wood Park at Rancho de Oro. Staff recommends that the city approve Amendment Three to the property lease agreement with the YMCA extending the term for 25 years commencing on May 5, 2023. Excuse me, I think, May 6, 2023, and terminating on May 5, 2048, and authorize the city manager to execute the amendment. In 1998, the city and YMCA entered into a property lease agreement which outlined the details of the construction, operations, and maintenance of the recreational facility and programs to be offered at the YMCA at the Jim Wood Park. Thereafter, the lease was amended through Amendment One and Amendment Two. The Y currently operates the Joe and Mary Matino YMCA at the property. The existing lease again is scheduled to expire May 5 of 2023. Pursuant to this lease, the YMCA has one extension option to extend the lease for a 25-year term and is requested to extend, to exercise that option at this time in order to continue operating the Matino YMCA at the property. The city is not to unreasonably deny the extension. The YMCA is not in default of the lease and therefore is entitled to this extension. The item tonight is considering the extension of the lease term only. This is a depiction of the entire park. The red area is the lease premises. You'll see at the more northerly side of the site plan is the Matino YMCA. And the other side, on the southern side of the green space, is the remaining lease premises. The YMCA is considering the expansion of additional facilities within their leasehold area, which is adjacent to the existing YMCA. However, such a request will require a lease amendment. Tonight's action in no way commits the city to ultimately approve any future expansion. Expansion of additional facilities and uses will require a public process and are at the city's discretion. This would specifically require future land use approvals, a conditional use permit, as well as a development plan. The expansion of the facilities are not being considered again tonight and are not part of the item before you today. So we are recommending approval of Amendment Three to the property lease agreement with the YMCA of San Diego for the Jim Wood Park and extending the term for 25 years through May 5, 2048, and authorizing the city manager to execute the amendment. And I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Let's call up the public comments.
Our first speaker is Robbie Trotta, to be followed by Diane Nygaard.
Good evening, Councilmembers and Mayor Sanchez. I'm honored here to be today to talk to you about the work that we've been doing at the Matino YMCA over the last 25 years and our plans for the future. Our organization focuses on serving the needs of our community, and we are proud to have provided over 1 million unique experiences through our membership and programs over the last 25 years. As we all know, the pandemic brought unexpected challenges. However, the Y, the nation's largest nonprofit provider of programs such as childcare, we were able to pivot our operation modeled by working closely with local officials to fill community gaps so first responders could have childcare. Children can access day camp and distance learning to ensure they wouldn't fall behind or feel isolated. And all individuals will continue to receive critical support for social, emotional, and physical well-being, development through their online fitness programs, and eventually our outdoor fitness center. Looking to the future, we are excited to continue defining ourselves as a leader in well-being and positive youth development. We aim to establish partnerships and collaborations to further expand our reach to make an impact in the public health crisis of loneliness, isolation, and lack of connection. Whether it's doubling our day camp program participation, providing new expanded learning programs with our partners at Bellemante Academy, redesigning and revamping our onsite childcare program, or providing after-school enrichment and anti-bully programs with our school partners, we are dedicated to being a catalyst to transform lives and communities. Our commitment to the community is further demonstrated through our efforts to support those most in need. Over the past year, we provided life-saving skills of 300 free swim lessons with another 300 coming in June to the community. We distributed 1,250 fresh free produce boxes to the community members, provided 1,607 scholarships to those who needed it the most, and served over 3,000 children through our day camp, childcare, and youth sports programs. Despite these efforts, we recognize that our community still has significant disparities. For example, a recent community needs assessment found that Oceanside households are facing financial securities requiring subsidized childcare programs and having health gaps and educational disparities. To address these issues, we are excited to announce that we are launching our YMCA Matino preschool, which will help address the essential childcare desert in the area of Oceanside. In addition, we are very close to opening our first two classrooms inside the Matino YMCA, and we're excited to continue to provide childcare and programs for both youth and adults that combat social isolation and mental health issues. At the Joe and Mary Matino Family YMCA, we believe in the power of working together and we're excited to see what the next 20 years will bring us as we work together to align the needs of Oceanside residents. We're committed to fulfilling community and the needs of compassion, dedication, and spiritual service. So again, thank you for allowing me to speak today. We look forward to working with the city and its community leaders. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nygaard?
Good evening, Mayor and Council Diane Nygaard. I very much appreciate the work of the YMCA and the Boys and Girls Clubs and Interface Services and so many of the NGOs that serve our community. But this is an extension of 25 years impacting our parkland. And before we do that, we need to make sure that you very carefully considered the impacts on parks and the free public facilities, you know, services that are generally provided by parks. I submitted some questions in writing earlier this week, and I would hope that those questions would be answered so that the community understands all of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So back to the council. I believe Councilmember Robinson. Oh, you didn't? Okay, Councilmember Weiss?
I was going to move approval, staff recommendation.
Okay, no other lights. Okay, I guess when you're here and live in the community for as long as I have, which is most of my adult life, or I should say, from the time I was born, born here in Oceanside Community Hospital, you get to know a lot of Oceanside, including the newer parts of Oceanside, which Rancho de Oro, which was a community which was master planned, to include a park. So this park was, this land was actually given to the city of Oceanside by the developer of Rancho de Oro for park. And the $450,000 that are referred to in the staff report, well, that was actually also mitigation for a project that was done, the shopping center, that was supposed to go to a soccer field. So back in 1997, 98, certainly before I got on the council, and I read the staff report, it did sound like this was to, this agreement with the Y, which was looking for a home, was for the westernmost part of our park, of our city's park. And so when I, you know, when you see it, it makes sense, right? And if it was just that part of the park, and if it was all park-related, like for example, I'm not sure that childcare and preschool is park-related under our regs, then I probably wouldn't have a problem with this extension. My concern is that things have changed. And as an attorney, who feels pretty strongly that we should be as transparent as possible, and also that whatever agreement we have should reflect, you know, the mutual beliefs and, you know, meeting of the minds. I'm very concerned that this is not a meeting of the minds, that yes, we will have, and this is, you know, a later time, we will have a project presented by the Y for expansion, for, you know, getting into the green space and building in the green space. And this green space is used by, for soccer and for, you know, the community, for gatherings and all of these things. So I am concerned that this is not a complete agreement. And, you know, I understand that our city attorney is saying, you know, because they followed the letter of the contract, there's not a whole lot that you can do about this. But as an attorney, knowing that the courts of law are merged with courts of equity, I really would have preferred that we really kind of communicate with the community and really find out what the needs of the community are. I did go to the celebration of the Y after 25 years and got to learn the things that they do there, which, as I said, I think they're wonderful things. However, I did not know that they wanted to, you know, build into the green spaces. And that's in fact where I learned that. And also, you know, they do market into Vista. It's not just citizens of Oceanside. So this is something that I think we really need to talk about, and that basically explains my vote that I'm going to be taking. Councilmember Robinson?
Thank you. And just because you kind of alluded to it, I just want to ask the city attorney, Mr. Mullin, is there any legal reason that we have for not approving this agreement tonight?
Not that I see the, you know, I didn't write this lease. It was from 1998. But it does include a renewal option on behalf of the LACI, and the city explicitly cannot unreasonably deny it. There's no specific standards built into that, so I would look at the terms of the lease. Has the LACI complied with its terms? Have they built the capital improvements? Have they maintained them? Have they operated the programs that constitute the consideration under the lease? And so there is a separate issue with regard to what they get to build on that green space that we've referred to. And the lease, the original lease and its two amendments certainly contemplate that there would be recreational-related improvements in that space. But the First Amendment anticipates that there would be a future amendment to deal with that. So in answer to your question, I don't see a legal basis to deny the renewal option. But as to what gets built in there, you will have your discretion through the CUP and the development plan and a future lease amendment. And I do share concerns that some uses may not be park uses, and they'll have to comply. And I've met with the Y representatives and told them they will need to comply with the Oceanside City Code restriction on park-related uses.
Thank you. You read my mind on the other question, so thank you.
Deputy Mayor Keim? Councilmember Joyce?
I would just say, first of all, we definitely all have appreciation for the Y and the services they provide to Oceanside citizens. I too share concerns about losing open park spaces to anything that isn't completely open to the public afterwards. So while I do share that concern, I also agree that not everything that was decided in 1998 is still a good idea. But tonight, I am going to be voting for this recommendation with the expectation that we will have a full conversation with the members of the public as the next phase of this comes forward.
Thank you. Let's vote.
Motion approved, 4-1. Sanchez, no.
Thank you. I'm going to skip over to item number 25 because I understand we do have some kids here that would like to speak. So item 25 is request by Councilmember Joyce and myself to direct staff to bring back an ordinance to protect our beaches. The ordinance will expand the state's single-use plastic bag ban and eddy ban on polystyrene foam sales in the city of Oceanside. The plan should include a pathway for businesses who need more time to comply, and city provided logistical support during the transition. And Councilmember Joyce?
Sure, I'll just briefly introduce. First of all, I'm so excited because whatever the other ideas were, this is a great idea. I'm really excited that our city can take a step forward in joining our neighboring cities in the fight against unnecessarily spoiling the beautiful natural world that we do have here in Oceanside. This proposal would be to build a styrofoam or a polystyrene foam ban in the city. It would also look at single-use plastic bags. So really getting folks to take that habit that they've gotten into, going to the grocery store, bringing your bag in other areas of life. It's something that we can all do, and it really would preserve the thing that we love the most, well, that many of us love here in Oceanside, the ocean. Every Oceansider that I've spoken to has expressed the same sentiment. It's about time. So tonight, it's about time. Thank you all for being here tonight, and I see the floor.
Thank you. How many requests to speak do we have?
We have 23 requests to speak.
23?
23, and more are coming in to sign up to speak on this item.
Okay, could we focus on the youth so that we can get some of them to speak?
Certainly.
Do we have, can we, can you raise your hands? And that way we can tick your name off the youth. Okay. So we got, okay, kids. That's what I'm saying, kids. All right. Raise your hand, and if you could come up to the podium, and we'll check your name off the list, if that's all right with you, Ms. Navarro?
That's fine. And I'll still leave this item open for the public.
Okay, yes, please do.
Well, we'll start off with Emily, Emily and her group.
And since some folks are going to be shorter than the podium?
Oh, she's their teacher. Oh, okay. So we'll start off with Anne Zavatsky?
Here we go. And, but we should probably give the mic to some of the kids. And can you all stand who are in support of this? Would you mind all standing if you are in support of this? Okay. Here we go. Thank you very much. All right. Let's get started. And there's been a request to speak for two minutes. If you can get it into two minutes. All right, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Anne Zavatsky. I'm a fifth-grade teacher at Del Rio Elementary School here in Oceanside. Our class has been doing a study on marine debris, and we have some students here tonight who would like to speak on single-use plastics.
Step on up, guys.
Emily?
Just say your name and then start talking.
Hello, my name, hello, my Hello, my name is Emily.
Hello, my name is Shalaya. Hi, my name is Kami.
Hi, my name is Virju, and we are in fifth grade at Del Rio Elementary School.
We're here to talk about the prevention of single-use plastics such as styrofoam. We learned that marine debris like styrofoam can break down into little pieces and take a long time to disintegrate.
The reason why we think banning styrofoam is a good idea is because it's one of the types of litter we see most when we head to the Oceanside beach. There are usually at least 15 styrofoam cups that have been stepped on, broken down, or even chewed on by dogs or others.
Overflowing trash can cause to marine debris, can cause marine debris and other sorts of troubles. When I go for a walk around food spots, there's always overflowing styrofoam cups rolling around. Lastly, the reason why we are explaining this news to you is because single-use plastics like styrofoam are one of the main causes of marine debris. We can all stop using single-use plastics and more reusable items. Please consider helping save marine life and ocean with us.
Thank you. Next?
Peyton? You're up.
Hi, my name is Kimberly, and we are in fifth grade at Del Rio Elementary School.
Hi, my name is Benjamin.
Hi, my name is Dante.
We are going to talk about reducing marine debris, which is trash that goes in the water. We are going to stop using a single-use plastic as much as possible. It is bad for the ocean because it hurts sea animals.
Marine debris can kill thousands, if not millions, of marine life. It is bad because it breaks down so small the animals may eat it, and we may eat it too.
Some people might say that we should keep, that we should just keep using styrofoam, but I disagree. It can break down so small and the water can absorb its harmful chemicals. It can cause people and sea life to get sick or even die. That's why I think we should ban single-use plastics like styrofoam. Because by 2050, there will be more plastic and fish in our oceans.
There Peyton and Nellie?
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez and honorable council council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. My name is Peyton Wilson, and I am a student representative from Surfside High.
Hello, my name is Nellie Brown. I am a junior at Surfside High. We are here to express our concerns about plastic pollution.
Over 1,000 tons of styrofoam is dumped into landfills every day in the United States, which is about 80% of all styrofoam. This litter is recycled, but is not accepted for recycling in Oceanside. According to an article in the San Diego Reader, 53% of beach litter is plastic. Foam trash makes up 17% of it.
Styrofoam is bio not biodegradable and can take at least 500 years to decompose. As it sits in the landfill, it releases methane with and contributes to the climate change and impacts the ozone layers. The chemical used in the styrofoam production affects the ozone layer, which protects the earth surface from sun-harmful ultraviolet. If ultraviolet radiation is harmed, it could lead to skin cancer and weaken immune system.
Approximately 20% enter storm drains and waterways, which leads to the ocean. The styrofoam floats on the surface and can even sink to the ocean floor, which leads animals feeding on the toxic particles. The National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration asked the question, fish eat plastic, we eat fish. The question is, can those chemicals harm us? Digesting plastic can lead to cancer and respiratory issues.
Studies have found that workers who are exposed to styrene have increased rates of cancer and neurotoxity, which is when toxic substances alter their normal activity in the nervous system. In addition, styrofoam food contains chemicals that can migrate into our food. From my experience, I go to the beach a lot. I go to the beach very often, and I want to go, you know, to feel as one with nature. But when I see plastic trash everywhere, and I see people getting up and walking away from it, it makes me feel disgusted, and it leaves a.
Go ahead.
Leaves a negative negative impact on the beach and interrupts my peace.
When I go out to eat, I usually take my leftovers home. The restaurant gives out styrofoam containers, and the warm food can cause the chemicals to absorb it. Knowing what I know now, ingesting the chemicals can affect my body. Please take our concerns into consideration and help stop the problem that's affecting our planet, home, and bodies. We thank you for giving us the time to speak with this dire situation and ask you to take action. That concludes our statement. Have a nice evening.
Thank you. Do we have any other young?
We have a student named Evelyn.
Good afternoon, Mayor Sanchez and all city member council. My name is Evelyn Para. I'm a senior at St. Jake High School, as well as a student at Miracosta College. And today I speak on behalf of banning single-use plastic. Somewhere right now, someone is buying or using single-use plastic such as a straw, fork, or bottle and not properly disposing of it. Single-use plastic does not disintegrate quickly. Instead, they photodegrade, which means they become tiny, small pieces of plastic called microplastics. These microplastics contain toxins that harm the environment around them. According to the NRDC in their article called "Single-Use Plastic 101," they state that we produce 300 million tons of plastic each year, and half that plastic is single-use items. Now imagine how much microplastics are on the planet right now. To give you an estimate, FAU states that 51 trillion microplastics are floating in the surface of the oceans right now. When people just throw single-use plastic on the ground or aren't careful with them, they end up in landfills and oceans and aren't properly taken care of. This not only affects the animals living on our planet, but it also affects anyone, and it increases climate change. Single-use plastic gets into the ocean and animals mistake it with food. The chemicals a single-use plastic release harms plants and trees. When single-use plastic ends up in parks and beaches, it can bring diseases. Not only would banning single-use plastic help decrease littering, but it will also decrease the demand for plastic, which highly contributes to climate change. We need to ban single-use plastic, not just for the generation that is currently on our planet, but for our great children, our grandchildren, and our very great children. We need to make a change in banning single-use plastic as a first step to help fight climate change, help keep our animals and our environment healthy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Mrs. Jones, did you need a?
Do we have any of the young folks who would like to who would like to speak before we have to cut to the six o'clock item? Any more students?
Any more students?
Come on, come on down. We we got like, we had a late start, I think 10 minutes. So go ahead.
Okay. Hello, council members. Hello, Mayor, thank you guys so much for this opportunity. My name's Savannah Hollenbaugh. I go to Miracosta, and I'm also a part of the Sustainability Club at the school. It's no doubt that we live in an extremely beautiful place. We're very fortunate to be this close to the ocean. It gives us the chance to better connect with the nature and environments around us. This is what motivates me to advocate for the environment. Our planet's delicate ecosystems are currently at threat due to the widespread use of single-use plastic and styrofoam. These materials are clogging landfills and polluting our oceans, which is disturbing all surroundings and surrounding environments. As humans, I think it's our responsibility to protect and preserve this precious resource for ourselves and future generations. So as a student, I ask you guys to please, please, please phase out single-use plastic and styrofoam citywide by 2024. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any other youth?
Good evening, honorable council members and Mayor Sanchez. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. My name is Briscoe Yoke. I'm a student at Miracosta. I am here to express my support for the polystyrene foam ban ordinance, as well as the expansion on the California bag law. In a state that's currently strained by the effects of climate change, be it drought or raging fire seasons we go through, it is in our best interest to support legislation that can directly benefit the health of our communities and state. The manufacturing and disposal of these harmful chemicals or materials will only accumulate the longer we continue to use them. So embracing this sort of ban today is the best way to ensure that the future challenges we face are not as difficult. Reducing the consumption, excuse me, of this synthetic material that is as toxic as polystyrene is incredibly beneficial for our local marine life. And as a seaside city, it is us who need to lead the way in order to protect the health of our coast and the ocean. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, honorable council members and Mayor Sanchez. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. My name is Bianca Rosales, and I have lived in Oceanside my whole life. I currently attend Miracosta College and am very active in our Sustainability Club on campus. As of right now, our campus is making an effort to move in the direction of sustainability. We already do not use styrofoam in our cafeteria and are actively looking for ways to replace more toxic single-use plastic for composable or waste-free items. Miracosta knows the harm that styrofoam has on its community. Do you? We are often told that plastic is our number-one enemy. In reality, styrofoam is the is worse than plastic. It pollutes our beautiful oceans. Why do we want to keep allowing styrofoam to trash the city of Oceanside, a city home to a community that does not want their children to grow up with the same styrofoam trash that has been here for years? This is a city that has been visited by the President of the United States. This is a city that is home to a college that has been featured in Forbes Magazine. As a coastal community, it is important to make advancements towards a more sustainable future. We are sick of picking up styrofoam on our beach cleanups. Thank you.
Thank you. Here we go. Maybe a mic? Or, yeah, he can, okay, that's good.
Hello, my name is Dylan.
On behalf of my peers at Miracosta and the community that's not able to attend, please let our voice and be heard and counted for as well. Thank you all for letting us be here. We would like to share that foam and plastics are very detrimental to our environment, our habitats, and our wildlife. We do need to see some changes, and as a thriving coastal city, we should be setting trends and giving good examples. I'd like to go and pass this around to each and one of you so you can have hands-on feel for something. But we do, we do ask that you pass this in a timely fashion. The longer you wait, the more harm and destruction is being caused out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you say your state, your name?
Amit Patel.
Okay, and you and your son's name?
Dylan Patel.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other kids, because we do need to get to the six o'clock item? We're going to stop here. I know we have others who wish to speak, but we do have to take up a time certain item, which is item number 22, Adoption of a Resolution Adjusting the Maximum Solid Waste User Rates. Approval of Waste Management's Annual Request for Consumer Price Index Adjustment Under the City's Solid Waste Service Contract. Approval of Waste Management's Request for an Extraordinary Adjustment on Solid Waste Disposal Rates. And Direction to Staff to Implement the User Rates and Franchise Service Provider Charges. And just to let you know, we will come right back to this item that we are on as soon as this item is over. All right? So if you if you can stay, that would be great.
We still have two other consent calendar items.
Yes, I know.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, okay. I want to go ahead and open this public hearing and request disclosures from my fellow council members regarding constituent contacts and correspondence.
Staff and the applicant.
Staff and correspondence.
Staff.
Staff. Staff applicant.
Thank you. Mr. Varral, do we have any correspondence and our petitions?
We have not received any correspondence or petition on this item.
Thank you. We're going to begin with a report by Ms. Colleen Foster, our environmental officer. Ms. Foster?
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez and council. Thank you. Good evening. I'll be presenting tonight Waste Management's Request for an Annual CPI Adjustment in Addition to an Extraordinary Rate Adjustment, effective July 1st. Staff is recommending adoption of a resolution establishing maximum solid waste user rates, an approval of Waste Management's Request for an Annual CPI Adjustment, and its extraordinary adjustment request under the current city's solid waste service contract, and defer the direct staff to implement those user rates and franchise provider charges. Our current contract, which is effective until December 31, 2023, establishes initial rates for all user services for residential, commercial, and multifamily customers. The current contract allows Waste Management to request an annual adjustment to their rates based upon CPI. It also allows for Waste Management to request an extraordinary adjustment at any point in time if operations or costs are impacted by circumstances beyond their control, not reasonably foreseen, and lasts for six months or greater. Waste Management's annual request for a CPI adjustment is based on either 75% of this year and the previous year's national all-city CPI, or 100% of the difference between, actually, I apologize, 75% of the difference of San Diego, or 100% of the difference between the national city CPI, whichever is higher. The request today is 8% rate increase, and that is based upon the U.S. average. In addition, Waste Management is requesting an additional extraordinary rate adjustment for residential solid waste rates by 1.59% and commercial solid waste rates by 2.07%. It's important to note that these rate increases do not apply to recycling, food scrap services, or their ancillary rates. It only applies to their solid waste rates. The request is due to a third-party disposal tipping fee that was increased last year. They are requesting an adjustment to cover this increase from the period of July 1st to December 31 of this year. The impact to residential customers will be $1.90 per month, with a total for the six months, $11.40. The impact to commercial customers, the minimum solid waste service for a ban, will be impacted by $11.75 each month, with a total of $70.50 over a six-month period. There is no fiscal impact to the city. In April, Waste Management took over the billing of all solid waste recycling and organics rates to customers, and the city no longer charges for these fees. That concludes my presentation with staff's recommendation for approval. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Any requests to speak from the public?
Yes, we have one request to speak from Jimmy Knott.
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Knott, 127, Cherry Lane, Los Alamos, Mobile Village, homeowner's representative. Recently, I've had the pleasure to meet with a few of our most needy seniors. And I'm talking about people who do not receive the $1,000 a month social security. Some receive 600, some receive $800 a month. Can you, and I ask each one of you, live on that amount? Can you pay rent? Can you pay your utilities? Can you buy even clothes on that and still live? I doubt you can. I want to see some compassion. I want to see some action in helping our most needy seniors. Some action can be taken, and that action can be very simple, and that is a request to Waste Management for compassion and action on their part to help our most needy in our city, whether it be through alleviation of increases or other services that they can render. The city itself can be inclusive into the contract of urging Waste Management and any other utility provider to take and carry a compassionate and environmental justice action to help our low-income people. And it's up to you where you want to put that line. I have ideas, and I'm sure you do, too. Let's see how far you can go with your love and concern. Thank you.
Thank you. No other requests to speak? All right. Do the council then? Excuse me, my apologies. This is a public hearing. If you do not have to have submitted a slip to speak. If you wish to speak, you can come up, stand up, and approach the podium, provide your name, and you have up to three minutes to speak on this specific item. Anyone else wanting to speak on this? I see no one else. I'm going to go ahead and close this public hearing. And actually, if you, Ms. Foster, could respond to the question that was posed about whether or not we could have separate rates?
Under the current, Mayor Sanchez, under the current franchise agreement, there are no separate rates for seniors. There is the standard service rate, which is the 35-gallon trash cart with up to three recycling carts and green waste carts that are larger. That is an option that Waste Management can work with customers to make sure that they're utilizing that lower rate to have a lot of customers. that lower rate, to have, a lot of customers end up having a larger cart where they can actually downsize to the lower rate at a smaller cart.
All right. Thank you. To the council, Councilmember Weiss.
Move approval, staff recommendation.
Okay, there is a motion in a second. And, and to, I guess I'll ask in a different way, to Ms. Leahy and, and to our city attorney regarding whether or not we would have the ability to, for some kind of hardship, provide lower rate for seniors even for a very, for a short period of time?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council. I don't believe we have the ability to dictate how Waste Management establishes their rates, although we could work with them and see if they could offer such programming. I don't believe that they have to follow Proposition 218, similar to the water and wastewater utilities. But we could inquire and see if that's something that they could offer. But I don't know how much control we have over dictating the programs and the development of those rates and programs. But we can inquire.
My expectation is that if you were to take revenue away from Waste Management under this action, then we would have to subsidize it through the general fund or some other mechanism. So.
This is a pass-through.
Correct.
So, right.
And I'll add that, again, Waste Management could look into something like this, but likely other customers, residential, commercial customers, would potentially be subsidizing the offset and the decrease in revenues from the other customers that may be on fixed-income programs. But again, we could look into that. This is, all this revenue is going to be going through Waste Management directly through their billing, and it won't be a pass-through through the utility. But because the count, the contract is between Waste Management and the city, it does require council's approval.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilmember Joyce?
I just want to take a second to recognize that we do, we do have a situation that we need to take a hard look at and, and put some direct planning into place with a growing senior population, especially those that are on fixed incomes. We have to have a plan. We have to have some sort of plan of how our city services and how we as a city plan to support people, because the largest, the fastest-growing population of homeless individuals is the senior population. And if we don't find a way to look ahead and plan for that, we're going to be contributing to that problem. And that seems like something that we should take up soon. But.
All right. Thank you. And this will be the first month, so next month's, that we have a separate bill. So for May, the bill coming in for May, right, will be two separate bills. Did you want to address that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
And the website that we'd be able to click on?
All of the city water, wastewater customers as of April will only receive a water, wastewater, and city services bill from the City of Oceanside beginning May of this year. This month, Waste Management will be billing all customers directly for Waste Management's solid waste and recycling services. The May bill will include the entire month of May, as well as the prorated services that were provided in the month of April. And all customers should bill and pay that bill directly with Waste Management. We do have links on the city's website, as well as on the online bill email that you'll receive if you receive electronic bills, for direct link to Waste Management's page to set up those accounts and pay online. But those bills will be coming in the mail this month.
Thank you very much. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Back to item number 25. How many speakers do we have left?
Fifteen.
Okay. Fifteen?
Fifteen.
Okay.
Our next speaker is Janice Jones, to be followed by Joe Houd.
I'll be super brief. Everyone, I am Janice Jones. Thank you so much for bringing this conversation forward again. I'm grateful for Mayor Sanchez and Councilmember Joyce for putting it on the agenda, for Councilmember Robinson for having conversation, Councilmember Weiss as well, and Councilmember Kime for working with us for quite some time, and city staff especially. So appreciate the entire Oceanside team. There's nothing I can add to what the students already shared. They spoke eloquently and convincingly. And I've been talking about this issue for a very long time. This is the only thing I'm going to add. I've been talking about this issue for a very long time, and as we've made changes and taken baby steps, I've only seen it getting worse. And so I just really appreciate that. Hopefully, this will move forward tonight. So thank you.
Thank you. Joe Houd?
Good evening. My name is Joe Houd, and I represent the North County Climate Change Alliance and the North County Group of the Sierra Club. Fifteen-plus million tons of plastics enter our ocean every year, some from Oceanside's beautiful beaches. Plastic waste causes untold misery in our ocean ecosystems and ultimately for us. The plastic typically used in bottles, bags, and food containers contains chemical additives which are associated with cancers, birth defects, and immune system suppression in humans and in wildlife. I'm sure you value your life and the lives of your family and constituents. I know I sure value mine. Chemical leachates from plastic bags impair the growth of the world's most important microorganisms. So it's not just big ones, it's tiny ones. Brocollo Caucasus, a marine bacterium that provides 1/10 of the world's oxygen. Get that? 1/10 of the world's oxygen. Those little beasties are attacked by plastic. I'm sure you value deep breathing. Again, I know I do. While you can hear many devastating statistics from the children tonight, and perhaps from the next set of speakers, the bottom line is really simple. It's imperative that you direct staff to write the most stringent single-use plastic ban that can be conceived, and when ready, you pass it. I mean something more stringent than what we've seen till now. We must do our part to protect the health of all life and our planet. Anything else would be gross negligence. Please support the young people who spoke tonight. Pass this bill.
Thank you. Janine Sepulveda?
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez and members of City Council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name again is Janine Sepulveda, and I'm a professor of marine biology at Maricopa College, and I have been for nearly 20 years. I'm glad you're discussing this potential ban. This has been something really nested pretty deeply into the curriculum I teach. There's really not a whole lot, as I listen to all of the different age groups of students speak, there's not much more I want to add, other than two things. First, I've been taking students to the beach for, you know, almost two decades now. Every semester, cohorts of students, we do water analyses, we collect plastics, we quantify in the sand, in the water, in our plankton samples. And it is just going more and more and more. There's more bits of styrofoam, there's more plastics. As we look at that, the only consideration to add to what all of them have said before us, before this time, is that there is a trophic impact of these plastics. They get taken up by zooplankton, which get consumed by bait fish, and on up the food chain. So ultimately, it is also a food security issue as well, because it ends up leaching those chemicals into our seafood. So there's other considerations as well, other than just the look of it and having it on our beaches. And I just ask you, in support of this, I ask you to be role models for all of these future leaders that came up here and, and were nervous and asked for your support. And I'm honored that, that they were all here to do that. So I'm asking for your support on, on that ban. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane Woki?
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez and council members. Diane Woki, District 2, retired, advanced practice, and public health nurse. I would encourage you to consider not just the expanded polystyrene, but other plastics as well. These all have an impact, not only on our environment, but also on human health. Polystyrene is in fact only recycled in 1% of cases, and that is generally the brand name Styrofoam, which is not the same as expanded polystyrene, and it's largely construction waste that is recycled. I did find one food container recycler in Mexico City. It, polystyrene doesn't, doesn't biodegrade, it just breaks down into smaller pieces. And in fact, I have found reports where it's predicted to last in the environment a million years, which is double what some of the students were. We need to send a clear message. We've gotten some confusing information recently from the city in a mailer, as well as what's on Green Oceanside's website. I would suggest looking at Beyond Plastics, and under polystyrene, they have a couple of very good flyers, one English, one. Microplastics are found in every single human organ, including the brain. Just recently, in fact, last month, polystyrene particles were found to pass the blood-brain barrier within two hours. And this is consistent with other research that has been done on other types of plastics on the human brain. It's also, again, just reported recently been found in sperm and human testes. And the, it decreases, it decreases fertility for one, and this too is consistent with other studies. If you find you cannot support this measure, I would encourage you to seek medical guidance, because in fact, perhaps you already have microplastics that have crossed the blood-brain barrier.
Thank you. If you, if you could.
And?
Wrap it up.
It could in fact have even entered other organs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Taya?
Lazutin?
Lazutin? Nope, not here. Okay, Michelle Seibert?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Sanchez and council members. My name is Michelle Seibert, and I'm a proud Oceanside resident. I'm a wife and mother of two children. I'm here tonight in support of the plastic ban in Oceanside. During the pandemic in 2019 and 2020 continuing on, I walked Oceanside beaches every day, every morning, and I picked up trash and plastic along the mile stretch from Tyson Street Park to the Harbor Village and then back. The amount of plastic and trash that I found on a single walk by myself would astound you. I picked up so much plastic that I began making art with it. And as you see here, this is all of my black pieces that I have found. And this actually isn't everything. I got a little frustrated and threw a lot of it away because I was becoming burdened in my own home with how much plastic I was collecting. And I didn't want to see it go into the landfill, but I didn't really know what else to do with it. And I have all the colors of the rainbow in bins like this. And I also have bins of larger pieces and very, very tiny pieces. A beach toy breaks down into a piece that might be six inches or four inches, and it continues to break down until you can't see it with the human eye. And before the pandemic, I really didn't have a clue what was going on. And it just opened my eyes to what a big problem it is. And I'm no, I mean, I'm just a person. I'm not part of an organization, a big one, or a college professor. I'm just a mom. And this is just what I have seen with my own eyes. I really hope you pass this ban.
Thank you. Michelle Seear?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Sanchez, Deputy Mayor Kime, council members Joyce, Robinson, and Weiss. My name is Michelle Seear, and I'm an Oceanside resident, here to speak out in support of this agenda item number 25, to direct staff to draft an ordinance to phase out polystyrene foam, single-use plastics, and to expand the California bag law to retail and restaurants with as quick a turnaround as possible. The cities of Vista, Carlsbad, and San Marcos have successfully passed plastic ordinances, all of which address foam. The city of San Diego became the second-largest city in California to pass a foam ban, taking effect April 1, which is the template for our ordinance. If all of these cities can phase out foam, as have Encinitas, Del Mar, Imperial Beach, and over 130 other cities in California, then we can too. A friend of mine told me recently that a survey concluded that Oceanside has the best beaches in the nation. Don't we want to keep them as clean and protective as possible, as well as the marine life and human lives too? I participate in beach cleanups here in North County and regularly see so much plastic and styrofoam, and you've seen all the pictures tonight, as well as when I bike and walk our city streets, I see it all over too. I care about our city and the role plastics played, and I've seen people just, I think they've come to expect getting single-use plastics when they eat out, and can easily learn new, new practices, like taking their silverware. A client of mine made these for, for people, and then taking their cups. I always take my cups and my silverware when I go eat out. And people can learn that too, and to respect the environment, and take responsibility for the effects that plastics have had in our environment. We've learned to take our own bags with us to shopping areas to shop, and we can expand that to the rest of the places we shop to, like Home Depot or local takeout restaurants. The idea is to create incentives for people to do so and to take responsibility, especially with climate change happening and the need for climate stabilization. So thank you so much for your time. I hope you can approve this ordinance.
Thank you. John Barrow?
Good evening. I'm John Barrow with Cleaneth4Kids.org, and we absolutely support this measure. As you've heard from everyone here, plastic is really, really horrible stuff. So not only is it full of toxins, which we eat and breathe, it also gets into every part of our body, and especially children. Polystyrene is a polymer made from styrene, and it leaches styrene and benzene into food and beverage, regardless if it's cold or hot. Both of those chemicals are on Prop 65 in California as causing cancer and indigent disruption. Styrene is also a neurotoxin. And the best way to get rid of all the plastic is to turn off the tap. Do we just got to stop making it and stop using it? I'm not that old. I'm older than, well, I wouldn't say everybody here, but you know, now that the youth is gone, I can't really say that. But, you know, I remember when we didn't have plastic bags, and we didn't have plastic ketchup bottles, everything was just glass. So it's not that we can't do it, we just got to make it happen. So please pass this ordinance and stop all plastic bags, not just single-use, but all plastic bags. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane Nygaard?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Diane Nygaard, representing Preserve Calavera. For many years, my family has joined hundreds of other people on the day after the Fourth of July, cleaning up Oceanside beaches. The good news is that the volume of trash on those beaches is much less today than it was 20 years ago. But the bad news is that the new pollutant is these tiny little pieces of plastic and styrofoam, plastic that harms our marine plants, our marine wildlife, and ultimately all of us. So thank you very much for putting this on the agenda and considering this action, and please move this forward. This is preventable pollution, but we need you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Gerald Wharton?
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Gerald Wharton. I am an Oceanside resident, and I run an Instagram account called Cleaning Up Oceanside, where I document cleaning up our city, along with other volunteers. I wanted to say thank you to- I wanted to say thank you to everyone that stood up and spoken tonight about this topic. And there's really not much more that I can add, so I will not say everything that you've already heard tonight a second time. But I will show you an example of what you've been talking about today, which is how single-use plastic becomes microplastics. And what wasn't discussed tonight is that when these single-use plastics are exposed to sunlight, they become very brittle. But this is a fresh plastic bag. I want to show you, this is a single-use plastic bag, and it's one piece of film that is strong and sturdy. But when it's exposed to sunlight, that I picked up today on my walk, it becomes very brittle. It becomes millions of pieces of tiny little particles that you can see will continue to be great and smaller and smaller and smaller pieces. And it will actually keep doing that, and it really never goes away. And that's because plastic does not degrade in the way that you think. It does not decompose. It simply becomes smaller. It becomes microplastics. It becomes a nuisance, and there's no way to clean it up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Marissa Figueroa?
Hello, Mayor and council members. My name is Marissa Figueroa. I am a local resident seaside, and I also have a small business called Sonori Fillery, which is an effort to conserve plastic waste and offers alternatives to petroleum-based plastics. Which, again, I am here to remind you that Styrofoam and most plastic bags, as well as single-use plastics, are made out of petro. They are refined, just like gasoline. And they are incredibly toxic to our environment, including our bodies. They break up into tiny, micro pieces of plastic, which we call microplastics. And they can get through water filtration systems. This is incredibly harmful to the city of Oceanside. I hope that you here support this community and its efforts to improve its health and viability, regardless of our growth and development. Because we are the stewards of this land. We are responsible for how we take care of our community. And as we grow and develop, we are responsible for teaching not only the citizens of this community, but visitors, the same, how to treat our community. And when they visit, which we all want more visitors and tourism here in Oceanside, we want to teach them and encourage them to live by the standards that we would like to live by and encourage the health and well-being of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria Rivera? Mitch Silverstein?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Mitch Silverstein, Surf Fighter Foundation, San Diego County. Thank you, Councilmember Joyce and Mayor Sanchez, for bringing this important item for us today. I'd like to start by providing an example of what foam pollution looks like at our beaches. This was all collected from Buccaneer Beach and brought there by Loma Alta Creek, which is a small watershed that is entirely within city limits. It's a good example of why we're here today. I'd also like to talk about what an ordinance itself might look like should this item move forward, since everyone has spoken so compellingly about the larger issue of plastic pollution and foam. With Surf Fighter, I've had the privilege of working with several neighboring cities who've taken these very actions we're discussing tonight. I submitted a model ordinance to you last Friday that we hope will give the city a head start and show our commitment to supporting the effort. The model ordinance would phase out polystyrene foam equitably across the board, rather than only target restaurants, which was a call-out we noted when this was considered in 2021. We included languages to help businesses that face financial or feasibility-based challenges, including an automatic 12-month extension for small businesses with less than $500,000 in gross annual receipts. This gives a longer on-ramp for small businesses while also cutting down on staff resources. In regards to enforcement, we understand if a complaint-based model best suits city staff's current capacity. This is similar to the city of San Diego's approach, which our model polystyrene language is based on. The single-use plastic bag language follows that same spirit of leveling the playing field for all businesses because the 2016 state bag law mainly applies to grocery and convenience stores. Expanding the scope to first retail, then restaurants, is a proven way to reduce plastic pollution while incentivizing customers to bring their own reusable bags, something Californians are already accustomed to doing at grocery stores. We feel the right ordinance for Oceanside is an incremental one that's fair to businesses, mindful of staff resources, and effective in reducing plastic pollution. And we think the model we've provided strikes that balance, or at least start to. Surf Fighter asks you please move this item forward, and with a relatively quick turnaround, ideally 30 to 60 days. Thank you for your consideration, and we look forward to working as a community to reduce plastic pollution in Oceanside. Thank you.
Ellen Bartlett?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Can you hear me okay? It's a little... Oh, there we go. I'm speaking on behalf of Oceanside Sierra Club tonight, and the Sierra Club supports the proposal for an ordinance phasing out the use of Styrofoam and single-use plastics. The problem of plastic bags and Styrofoam are so well-known and documented that they cannot be ignored. And these problems become magnified since we live in a coastal city and a coastal community. Styrofoam can't be recycled, as many others tonight have spoken about. It just breaks into smaller and smaller pieces. The final destination becomes our ocean. And these can be ingested by marine wildlife, as well as other problems that they create. We do understand that local businesses do need time and support to transition to alternative and environmentally-friendly packaging. The Sierra Club submitted a letter with guidelines to the city staff to use when they craft the ordinance. These guidelines include, number one, phasing out polystyrene foam by 2024 in restaurants and retail, while supporting local businesses through the transition period. And number two, phasing out single-use plastic bags citywide. We can strengthen the California ban to include retail and restaurants and model our ordinance after the state law in order to have consistency and fairness across the board. And there are some other, as far as having a 10-cent pass-through fee to offset business costs. In closing, the Sierra Club urges you to take this vital step to protect our beaches and our ocean. We must all use all of the tools available to protect our community and its wildlife from these ubiquitous pollutants. Thank you, and thank you for bringing this ordinance to our city. We really appreciate that. It'll make a big difference.
Thank you. Tony Martinez?
Madam Mayor Sanchez, council members. My name is Tony Martinez. I'm a resident of Oceanside. I live in the historical Mission Sunless Ray neighborhood. I'm a graduate of the Franciscan School of Theology, and I can only speak to the goodness that God has given all of us in the gift of creation. My tradition calls me to collaborate with policymakers and also with the public at large to support any measures that benefit the whole of our community. And I believe wholeheartedly that this is one of those measures. I cannot speak for my faith community, but I urge you to listen to the science behind this proposal and also to listen to the voice of the children, who are the future of our society. So I thank you for your interest. And I also want to say that if there's a way for businesses who need assistance, to also collaborate with them, because we know that there are small businesses who rely on some alternative items that maybe we need to consider as well. So I ask you to reach that. It's period of collaboration also with the different elements of this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. No other speakers? Okay, back to the council. Councilmember Joyce?
I mean, I would move approval of providing staff direction to develop an ordinance based on, that was what was submitted to us, to ban polystyrene foam and to phase in a ban on single-use plastic carryout bags.
Right, as indicated on the agenda, that includes a pathway for businesses.
Absolutely. So first and foremost, we want to make sure that we recognize that small businesses are the fabric of our community. Making sure that we have vibrant small businesses that can thrive in our city is extremely important. So anything that would come back would definitely include extended timeline for those that need a longer runway for getting to the implementation of this ordinance. And to the best that we can, technical assistance in finding alternatives.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Robinson?
Keep hitting buttons here. Thank you. We haven't had a second on that yet, have we?
Go for it.
I'll second it. But do you want to have some discussion about it, particularly about the business community? Again, we heard from a lot of people, but our business community isn't here to talk. So we definitely need to do a good outreach to them. But everybody brought props, so there you go. That's one of the bad ones. It's been sitting on my desk for about a week, and I've been watching it very carefully. And it hasn't changed one bit. It's just like, except the liquid evaporated out of there. Now, the reason I'm bringing this up, and I think some of our kids kind of already said it, too often, we blame inanimate objects and accuse them of being responsible for bad things. But it's not the inanimate object. This doesn't become bad until I pick it up and do that. That's how they get to the beach. That's how they get to the ocean. That's how they... So I encourage everybody that, no matter what we use, I believe it was Ms. Seibert had that box of plastics. Very few of those look like single-use plastic items. They look like solid plastic pieces. And that, we're responsible. We have the duty to use the things that we use every day better. And nothing irks me more than to drive down our streets and around the homeless camps and all the things and see the trash and the stuff that's left. And I'm probably not as good about picking things up as many of you are, but I try. And all of us need to be better. No matter where this takes us, no matter what products we use, we don't want them into our oceans, into our streamways and things like that. So I'll just end with that and look forward to voting on it.
Thank you. Councilmember Weiss?
I just want to make sure we're not including surfboards in this. Right?
Would never take your surfboard away.
Are we? They're Styrofoam.
Are you still on a foamy after all these years?
Now we know what to get for Christmas.
These comments are in regards to the model, the draft ordinance that Mr. Silverstein brought to us. And I have a concern. If we're going to go down this path, I'm fine with providing a long enough lead time for businesses to comply. I'm not supportive of the financial hardship portion that exempts businesses that have less than $500,000 in gross receipts. If we have an issue with pollution, which obviously we do, it should be applicable to all the businesses. But here's more of why I say that. We have 394 restaurants in Oceanside. Only 10 of them have annual receipts in excess of $500,000. So if we're going to grant an exception for those businesses that are under, we're pretty much granting everyone an exception. So my issue is, pick a long enough lead time so that we have an appropriate outreach and education, and then initiate. So when it comes back, we have a program in place of when it's going to be effective and how long of a lead time we need. The other thing I would ask that, when it comes back, I'd ask the city manager's office to include just that. What efforts are we going to have to address outreach and education and enforcement? Even though it's complaint-based, at some point, someone's going to have to go out and deal with the violators. And my concern would be is, what is the cost of that going to be? And how do we do that? So other than that, did you second? Okay. No, that's fine.
I just want to say that I felt so honored to have the youth here speak. It was wonderful to see them. It is, I just feel like we're kind of sandwiched in between youth who want to save our planet and actually have a sense about that. And elders, I say elders. When I was growing up, everything was recycled. Hosery. My grandmother would make rugs. The sacks for the flower clothes. I mean, there were just all these things. And of course, we didn't have plastic bags. I just think that it's something that we, as a community, do want to do. I have been talking to some of the business owners. I even, I have to say this, ended up in a restaurant in Carlsbad, yes. Just very, very few times I do go outside of Oceanside. Okay. And I said, oh gee, you've got, skip the stuff. Yes. And the person who was there was just so proud of what Carlsbad is doing and explaining to me how they are getting rid of their foam, their Styrofoam. And I was like, wow, a business... I'm not sure that she was the owner, but just someone who works there who is just so happy that they are moving in that direction. Carlsbad has already adopted this. Vista, San Marcos, with us adopting this. And we've got to make sure that Escondido does, too. So I'm really, really happy that we're doing this. I think that the language that's on here takes into consideration the concerns of Councilmember Weiss. And I think those concerns are really valid. I want to say that we do this together, and our community is just going to be that much better. And I do want to give props to staff, really, Colleen Foster. This was part of a master plan that she had put together. And unfortunately, we didn't take that step a little earlier because concerns about perhaps burdens on small business. But now we know that the businesses do want to do this. They do need time to do this. And if we're all doing this, then hopefully the alternatives to foam will be actually much more affordable than they are now. Councilmember Joyce, did you want to say something else?
I just wanted to ask staff how much time they would need or when they could expect to bring this back.
Thank you, Councilmember Joyce, Mayor and City Councilmembers. I would like to request that we come back in August. Since July is dark, this will give us a couple months to put the ordinance together. Staff is having some resource issues. We, as of next month, will have only one of our five full-time positions filled. And then we would like to probably bring back a contract for a consultant to help implement and do the education outreach program, should council wish to go forward with that.
Okay. I appreciate that. It's urgent, but it's better that we get it done and get it done right. So I'm good. Thanks.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
All right, item number 16. Back to the consent calendar, my apologies. Item number 16 is approval of the fiscal year 2023-2024 Police and Fire Commission work plan. Somebody from the public pulled that?
Linda Slater? Not sure if she's still here. Oh, there she is. Yeah, there's Linda.
Thank you very much, Mayor Sanchez and City Council, and thank you for passing that last item. When I was reading over the agenda and the supporting documentation, I was concerned regarding the Police and Fire Commission, their report that they're going to form the Standing Oversight Committee, which is great. But my concern is that I don't see a lot of citizen oversight in the documentation right now. If you look through Agenda A and B, it's pretty much done by the departments. And so I'm asking that, would you direct or would you please, the Police and Fire Commission, would they please emphasize the need for citizen participation in this Standing Oversight Committee? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion? There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Item number 19 is adoption of a resolution authorizing the Water Utilities Department to accept up to $34,604,302 in grant funds from the California Department of Water Resources Urban Community Drought Relief Program for the Recycled Water Use Expansion and Disadvantaged Community Water Use Efficiency Projects, community water use efficiency projects, and authorization for the city manager to act on behalf of the city as signatory to accept grant funding. And I do want to congratulate staff on that $34 million, 34.6. This was pulled by?
Jimmy Knott.
Mr. Knott.
Mayor, Councilmembers, Jimmy Knott, 127 Cherry Lane. In order for our low-income and disadvantaged communities, this has intuit some issues and devices they want to bring forward, like for water-efficient devices, toilet flow sensors, and also landscape improvements. Now, the question is, how does this affect real life? Within the Mobile Home Park community, which I can take and relate to, living in one, the biggest problem that we have, and I'm sure it does in multifamily communities, is a need for toilet repairs, and that is the constant running of toilet, or, you know, constantly, constant, constantly. And either the toilet needs to be replaced, or the floats need to be adjusted. I did not see that into the proposal. And also, the other one is landscape upkeep within the community. Within the Mobile Home Park community, you normally have a real small area that needs to be upkeep. But we have the problem with both of these is the lack of knowledge or the lack of ability. As you get older, what happens is that your body ages. You have heart conditions, you have breathing problems, you have bone problems, arthritis sets in. What happens is that you need help. I did not see that in this proposal, as giving help to our needy seniors and those who have disability problems. Now, this follows into environmental justice, disadvantaged communities, and low income. It also opens the door to work with our park managers and for those communities, multifamily communities, and also our park reps. Because the thing is, is there's the records that they go ask the managers, who has extra water running? They can oscillate those places that can easily be saying, these people need help. I would encourage you and the department to look into this.
Thank you, Mr. Knott. This item is a motion to accept up to $34.6 million in grant funds, grant funds from the California Department of Water Resource Urban Community Drought Relief Program. I move approval. There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Item number 20 is approval of the fiscal year 2023-2024 Annual Action Plan of the Consolidated Plan for Housing and Community Development for Submission to HUD. Authorization for the city manager to submit the plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD for funds under the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Programs. Authorization for the city manager to sign and execute required forms and documents for the grant funds, and authorization for the Housing and Neighborhood Services Director to sign agreements and subrecipients. We have a report by Ms. Cecilia Brandiaran, Management Analyst.
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez, Councilmembers. I'm here tonight to present the 2324 Annual Action Plan for your approval and submission of this Plan to HUD, which also includes authorizing the city manager and the Housing and Neighborhood Services Director to sign all necessary documents. The action plan is part of the adopted 2020-25 Consolidated Plan that identified the anticipated uses of our CDVG and home dollars over that five-year period. The March 22 public hearing opened the 30-day comment period, and staff has not received any new comments. Per federal mandates, CDVG allows 20% of the entitlement to be used for administration and 15% for public services. For home, 10% is for admin and 15% for community housing development organizations known as CHODOs. To be eligible for CHODO funds, the community-based nonprofit organizations must be certified by the city and develop affordable housing in Oceanside. The primary objective of the CDVG program is the development of viable urban communities through decent housing, a suitable living environment, and expanded economic opportunities for low and moderate-income persons. Additional federal requirements include the nature of the activity, meaning national objectives, organizational capacity, and adequate administrative and financial processes and systems. Funds under these, under this category cover all city staff costs associated with the management and administration of the City of Oceanside CDVG program, including regulatory compliance, contract administration, subrecipient monitoring, and fiscal management, and the preparation of all the required planning documents. The Administration and Planning CAP category also includes housing program development and activities to promote fair housing. Public service activities, we're allowed again to do that 15%, and for next year, it is $211,333 for public services. Capital improvement projects, known as CIPs, after the public service administration activities are funded, remaining funds may be used for eligible capital improvement projects serving qualified CDVG populations of facility improvements and other housing, community development-related activities. The picture you see is a shot at the Libby Lake Park ADA, one of the amended projects that council approved at the December meeting. And at the Housing Commission meeting, there was also discussion about the determination of eligible, inclusive of Section 108 loan debt service for Fire Station 7. The city continues to make payments on an annual basis on its Section 108 loan for construction of the fire station. Payments on this loan began in 2008 and '09 and are amortized over 20 years, with $251,335 due in this upcoming fiscal cycle. The Housing and Neighborhood Services Department manages housing rehab programs, including loans to low-income homeowners and grants to very low-income mobile home residents and owners. Existing housing programs are funded with prior-year dollars, with a combined allocation of approximately $300,000. This budget also includes $100,000 for project management and direct loan services. Several capital projects have been identified with the assistance of community input that we received through the Parks and Rec Master Plan, the Crown Heights Neighborhood, Tri-City Neighborhood, and Libby Lake Community Groups. Staff prioritize these projects over the Consolidated Plan five-year cycle. In regards to our home funding, recommendations to continue to provide temporary tenant-based rental assistance through a nonprofit partner. This concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any requests to speak from the public?
We have none.
Thank you. I move approval. Councilmember Joyce?
Evening, everyone. Thank you for bringing forward the plan, and I'm really excited about some of the projects that are coming forward. The Libby Lake project, I know, is really a well-received project, and I know that the community worked on that together, and so I can't wait to see those go into place. I just wanted to make sure that as this goes through again, that I voice my concerns about the loan, that it remains in the CDVG funding to pay for the Fire Station 7 construction. And then I just wanted to take a second to, again, establish that we really need to be thinking about housing holistically, and how our city's policies are either contributing to the lack of housing affordability, which is driving the displacement of people that have been living here their whole lives, and it's also driving the homeless crisis that we are experiencing. I heard at a previous council meeting that staff would be working on possibly putting together a housing workshop. Do we have an idea about when we can expect that to happen?
Yes, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, and Councilmember Joyce can answer your question. Right now, we're looking at scheduling that on August 30.
With that, I'm really excited for the workshop, as you know. So with that, I will end my comments.
Thank you. I'm really excited about it, too. I think staff knows that. All right, there's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Item number 21, approval of a purchase and sales agreement with Alta Loma Creekside Property LLC in the amount of $1.4 million for the purchase of 3141 Oceanside Boulevard for potential use for various general-purpose city services. Authorization for budget appropriations in an amount not to exceed $1.5 million for the acquisition of real property and due diligence expenditures. Authorization for the city manager to execute the agreement upon receipt of all supporting documents. Authorization for the city clerk to accept the grant deed for the property, and authorization for staff to open escrow and consummate the closing of the transaction upon receipt of all supporting documents. And we have a report by Ms. Vicky Gutierrez, Real Estate Manager.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers. Vicky Gutierrez, Real Estate Manager for the Public Works Department Property Management Division. And Mayor, you have kindly introduced the item, so I will move right in with it.
Thank you.
Go to the first slide. Staff recommends, well, you said that, excuse me, pardon me. So in December, for some background information for you, in December of 2022, staff met with council in closed session regarding the city's potential purchase of the acquisition of 1.92-acre parcel of vacant land owned by Alta Loma Creekside Property LLC. It's located at 3141 Oceanside Boulevard. The 1.92-acre property is immediately adjacent and due east of the city-owned property referred to as the Oceanside Navigation Center Parcel. The property was listed for sale by the seller and had an asking price of $1.6 million. Council authorized staff to enter into negotiations with the seller for the acquisition of the property, subject to an appraisal, to determine the market value, and authorized staff to complete various due diligence investigations. This depicts the property. You'll notice in the center of the green area is the subject parcel, the 1.92 acres. Surrounding that is, they are all city-owned parcels, so are surrounded by city-owned parcels existing. So per council's direction and appraisal, a report was prepared by Aaron's Group. It indicated a value of $1.6 million. On March 27 of '23, the city made an offer to purchase the property for $1.475 million, with the closing to occur within six months from the approval by council of the purchase and sale agreement. The seller verbally agreed to that purchase price, however, they wanted to close and have a more expedited closing for the purchase of the property. On April 5 of 2023, council authorized staff to revise our offer letter and provide a close of escrow to occur no later than August 15 of 2023, which is approximately 100 days, assuming the property is acceptable to the city with our due diligence and to bring the purchase and sale agreement before council in May, which we're doing right now, and then again to close escrow. So on April 7, the seller executed the revised offer letter and agreed to the terms as proposed. The property is owned industrial, and it's centrally located near the intersection of El Camino and Oceanside Boulevard. And again, it's immediately east of the Oceanside Navigation Center Parcel. The property could be used and potentially support various general-purpose services. We see the most valuable use may prove to be surface parking lot that would allow the city to maximize the use of the city-owned Navigation Center Parcel. The Navigation Center Parcel is to be operated as a 50-bed, one portion of it, as a 50-bed homeless shelter operated by the San Diego Rescue Mission, and that's scheduled to open this summer. The Navigation Center Parcel is also occupied by the city's Code Enforcement Division, and the Oceanside Police Department has a training, a small training center at that location as well. Staff uses property as a strategic acquisition due to the existing shared access entry, which exists between the Navigation Center Parcel and this property. Through the acquisition, the city would gain control of the use and the access to both properties. The property contains an existing easement with the San Diego Gas and Electric Company, and it consists of approximately 37,386 square feet. So staff will be further investigating that to ensure that the allowable easement area, at a minimum, can allow us to park, parking, surface parking on the property. Per the proposed purchase and sale agreement, due diligence expenditures are to be approximately $50,000, to include but not be limited to review of title of that easement, a Phase 1 environmental assessment report, review the existing geotechnical, we are probably going to do a survey on the property, and review the property documents that we've been provided by the seller. The terms in addition of the acquisition between the city, that's stated wrong up there, between the city and Alta Loma, the seller, is the purchase price is $1,475,000. Opening escrow will be within seven days of your approval tonight, if that's given. City would have until August 10 approximately 100 days to complete our due diligence investigations for the property, approving the physical condition and the feasibility for the property or its intended use. We have a refundable deposit of $15,000 if we do not agree, if we do not agree on the feasibility and condition of the property, we can get out at that time, otherwise it goes and is applied to the purchase price. And then again, escrow will close for the agreement no later than August 15 of this year, unless otherwise extended by a written agreement. So staff moves to request for and recommends approval of the purchase and sale agreement with Alta Loma in the amount of $1,475,000. Authorized budget appropriations in an amount not to exceed $1,525,000 for the acquisition of the property and due diligence. Authorize the city manager to execute the agreement upon receipt of all supporting documents. Authorize the city clerk to accept the grant deed for the property, and then authorize staff to open escrow and consummate the closing of the transaction. That concludes my presentation, and I'm now available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Any requests to speak from the public?
We do not have any requests to speak.
Okay. Move approval. Two seconds. There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. We are on public communications on/off agenda items. First, our advanced requests, written requests to reserve time to speak. This is item number 23. We have two requests under this. First, we have, first up is Sandra Martinez, and she's speaking on introducing a local platform to examine local issues and encourage civic participation.
Hi, Mayor and Council. I actually contacted the office because we were not ready to release that information yet.
Oh, okay. Thank you very, thank you very much.
I thought it was canceled off the agenda, but I guess not.
Thank you.
That's a different office.
Item number B, which is Richard Newton, Council Procedures Regarding Public Comments. Mr. Newton?
Honorable Mayor Sanchez, members of the council, and the public. In the name of good governance and probably law, the city has an obligation to provide an honest and accurate record of these public hearings. At the last council meeting, I and eight other people brought to the council's attention our concerns regarding the Oceanside Unified School District, its board, and superintendent. Although the school board is a separate and distinct political body, the council has a liaison, a liaison with it, and can apply political pressure despite the board's insulated position. For anyone interested, those comments may be seen on YouTube by searching for "Oceanside April 19 Council Meeting" at the 2:56 mark. Our comments at that meeting focused on graphic depictions from various books in our schools that I and others believe are not appropriate for schoolchildren. It is said that a picture is worth 1,000 words, and it is one thing to hear someone say inappropriate content, but it is quite another to see the actual pictures. That is why we displayed them to the council and why it is important for the people of Oceanside to see them. This was not done out of gratuitous intent, but was germane to the issue being presented. Indeed, those pictures were material content to our presentations to the council. The city, however, took steps to prevent those images from being seen by the larger public, both live on KOC-T and later on YouTube. These videos serve as a public record of council business, and any distortion of that record damages our democracy by misleading the greater public audience, i.e., the voting public. In effect, the City of Oceanside violated my constitutional right and that of others to engage in participatory democracy and have a say on public policy and the use of tax dollars. I confine only two interpretations for the city's censorship. One, that the city found the pictures so offensive that they could not be shown out of decency, or two, that the council engaged in a cover-up to suppress the political impact these pictures would have if they become, if the public became aware of them. Unfortunately, the council failed to criticize the books or condemn the school board, even when asked to do so, which essentially rules out that the council members found the pictures offensive. To be clear, we are not anti-LGBT. To be clear, we are not anti-LGBT, sex is part of life, and personal choices should be respected. Our position is simply that sex education in schools should be limited to clinically objective prescriptions of pregnancy and sexually transmitted diseases. Instruction manuals on how to perform sex acts are simply not appropriate for schoolchildren and a poor use of tax dollar. The left plays games with word meanings and manipulated the word tolerance to become acceptance, and acceptance then became promotion of their agenda. I push back and say, no, we don't have to promote it, and in fact, can criticize the promotion of their agenda, especially when they use tax dollars. That is the biggest underlying issue, the threat of wokeness that attacks our society every day. These books are just the start of the left's indoctrination process. Under the left's wokeness agenda, schoolchildren around the nation are punished for saying there are only two genders, for saying that men cannot have babies, or asserting that men should not compete against women in sports. This agenda starts out as small steps, perhaps showing graphic images or pondering gender or preference, but the left plays a long game and always moves the needle incrementally in their subversive direction, each incremental step laying the desensitizing foundation for the next increasingly radical position. Schools in California are being sued for promotion, for promoting gender-altering lifestyles and hiding that from parents. Incredible. There is a line in a country western song that says, "You have to stand for something or you'll fall for anything." Take a stand, make a statement, and publicly condemn the board and superintendent for allowing these books in our libraries. Draw a line and tell them not to cross it. I would like to close by addressing one more distortion of the public record by addressing Eric Joyce's comments at the end of the last council meeting when he said that we presented, quote, "misinformation about the books." I would ask him to elaborate on that statement. What I said at the last meeting can be summarized as follows. One, that schools are institutions that should be pillars of virtue, work ethic, lead by example, and maintain society standards. Two, that the board almost always rubber stamps the agenda without debate. Three, that there are books that can be described as instructional manuals on how to perform sex acts in school libraries. And four, that the book Gender Queer was considered too vile to show at the United States Congressional hearings, but that book is in Oceanside schools. Councilmember Joyce, please state for the record which of those statements or others were inaccurate. Thank you.
Thank you. And now to items not on the agenda.
Clarification that the city did not, made the decision to not display the materials. That decision was entirely exclusively KOCT.
KOCT, right. Yes. So, excuse me, sir. Excuse me, sir, we're done. Thank you.
KOCT?
Item number 24, communications to the public regarding items not on the agenda, not regarding an advance request to speak. How many do we have?
We have 12 speakers.
Are they all here?
I believe they are.
Going to cut this down to two minutes each.
So our first speaker is Stephen Harvey.
If you need more time, please work with me on this.
Be followed by Joe Freshman.
Mr. Navarro has a copy of what I'm going to tell you.
Okay.
If he gave it to you or not. I'm here tonight to go on record regarding the sinkhole event on Sky Haven Lane in Oceanside. It has created multiple issues affecting the residents in Green Valley Mobile Home Park and Vista. Some were directly affected by the land movement, and that has destroyed their homes. Others were displaced into a hotel where they still are living because their homes were red-tagged. And the rest of the park residents will suffer long-term financial issues regarding disclosures upon sale. Home values will be negatively affected, and home insurance will be more expensive. The residents do not deserve the ramifications of this event. This area has suffered from underground water and landslide issues since it was built on in the 70s. I have a DVD of the Oceanside Manor situation. It still pumps thousands of gallons of water into the tunnel daily to relieve the liquefaction problems that affect land's stability. Several years back, the council wrongly approved the Emerald Ridge project, which is on the same plot of land. The area residents presented a clear case for the council not to approve the project, and even your geological study told you that building on the site could trigger the two landslides that still are there. I thank the mayor for being the lone dissenting vote. Two of you sitting currently on the council did approve it. The Emerald Ridge project is about 1,000 feet from that sinkhole. Not only that, there's a pond of water that forms every rainy season, less than 100 feet above that sinkhole. Your approval of that project came with an interesting disclosure that the builder of the project would have to take financial responsibility.
Keep going.
Can I finish?
Yes, please.
I'll give this quick as I can. If it experiences future failure, the case of having your cake, tax base increase, and Oceanside bearing no financial culpability eating it too. Questionable ethics in my view. I'm on record asking the council to revisit the approval of this project before it breaks down. Lastly, most affected by this issue, there's been little communication and no compassion. The company that was hired to act on the property totally disregarded the property itself, the actually, the heavy equipment they used to secure the hill completely knocked these buildings down. They're now flat on the ground. In fact, two days before they began to rebuild the hill, water was seen leaking into the hole behind it, and they just covered it up. That's a major concern to me since water is the issue to begin with. I urge you to consider the unresolved issues and take an active role in trying to resolve the financial issues that the residents in Green Valley are going to experience in the future. Thank you for the extra time.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the, in the chambers who would, could give them an update on what's happening there?
Honorable Mayor, typically that would be Brian Thomas, our city engineer. He's not present, but if Mr., the speaker can leave his contact information, then we'll certainly have Mr. Thomas reach out to him.
Okay, thank you. Michael, could you, oh, yes. Chief, thank you. Thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry. Joe Freshman?
I'm from Green Valley Mobile Home Park, and I addressed this issue several years ago when you brought it up for Emerald Ridge. It's a disaster waiting to happen. It should not be approved. The geological studies that have been done by Oceanside and the builders and so forth are inadequate. They do not address the geological concerns that are in a larger, wider area than just that particular parcel of land. I believe that the volcanic activity that is ancient out volcanic activity and the Lake Calavera both have impact on the ridges and hills in that area. I just don't see how you can approve, continue to approve that Emerald Ridge because of the fact that it is only right at the bottom of landslide number three, or right, right on top of landslide number three, which has just occurred, which, which Steve just brought up. Basically, I'll just leave it at that. There's a lot of geological information that I have that can, I don't have time to impart to you right now, but I'd be more than willing to do so if you want to contact.
Thank you very much. And Fire Chief Parsons is outdoors. If you could give him your information so that our city engineer could give you the update. Thank you. Mel Vernon?
I would like Jimmy to go for me because I'm with Diane Nygaard on a presentation.
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Knott, 127 Sherry Lane. The city of Oceanside has only gone partway in helping our low-income people with the Low Income Housing Water Assistance Program. And by you can see here, a response from Lindsay Leahy over Director of the Water Department. She says, "At this time, there are no plans to change the city's water billing system." What that has to do with is, the city's water billing system does not apply for credits going beyond just the rearage that's going on. Oceanside is only one of 68 that are not fully enrolled of the 571 water districts here in the state of California. It is only one of two in the county of San Diego. So we are behind the ball and taking and fully helping our low-income communities. Now, I'm going to take and submit the list of all those communities and the communication from our director of order to the city clerk in order for you to see those records. But I think Oceanside needs to take and upgrade its billing section because what happens is that we need to be fully compliant and join in with the rest of state of California and the rest of the San Diego County in helping our low-income individuals who may find themselves in the rearage and trying to take and getting the water that they need.
Thank you, Mr. Knott. Thank you. So we've got next, Mr. Mel Vernon and Diane Nygaard doing a joint?
Sort of, yes.
Yes, okay.
Together.
So I'll give you a little more time.
When we come up, we decided that was not appropriate.
Okay. Here we go.
Diane Nygaard representing Preserve Calavera. Until recently, our city could be very proud of the actions that it's taken to preserve the sacred El Salta waterfall. Over 20 years ago, the developer of the Corey Creek Center wanted to destroy the falls in order to have a larger shopping center, and our city said no and approved the environmentally preferred alternative that saved the falls. And when Massey Nissan was built, our city included a condition in the COP for fencing along the creek, a key way to protect the falls. And when the reclamation plan was amended, our city required a false management plan to provide further monitoring and protection of the area around the falls. But today, if you look at the conditions around those falls, it's simply heartbreaking. On April 23rd, 101 volunteers joined us, the city, San Diego Habitat Conservancy removed four tires, 14 shopping carts, and an estimated 5,500 pounds of trash. And that was just on the south side of the creek. We couldn't even touch the north side because it has essentially become a continuous link of homeless encampments. These encampments damage the habitat along the creek, contaminate the water, and create a public health and safety issue, and what a desecration of the sacred site. So tonight, we again ask for your help to protect this area, enforce the fencing requirement along Massey Nissan to protect the creek and falls, create safe camping places with sanitary facilities. Please let us all do what we can to honor the Native American heritage of this area and the years of work the city has spent to protect this very special place. Thank you.
Mayor Sanchez and city council, I was there that morning when Diane Nygaard and all the volunteers showed up to, early that morning. I didn't stick around because I had to do other things, but you know, I was, it's very interesting to see that all through the years, our tribe has been, well, dedicated to the preservation of a sacred site isn't something that just comes around every day. And, and all the history that's gone into that valley and where it's become, I have, the homeless issue is something, you know, I care about people, and I realize that people have to be somewhere, but I can't help but think that that place is, is, is being overburdened, basically, by the situation that's there, that, that through the fencing and other, other things can be actually, you know, change the course of this. That San Luis Rey Ban of Mission Injil will support what we can do to work with the city and other organizations to, to find a remedy to this situation. It just can't be, it just can't be allowed to go on, you know, and expect Diane and all the volunteers to keep repetitive, doing this type of thing. Something has to change. And I think if it changes for the better, for the homeless situation to be in a place that has a better place for them, that'll, that'll help too. It's, you know, it's, it's not a good place to be for anybody. It might be a place because there's no other place to go. Maybe there's a better alternative. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Newton. Mr. Newton, I would like to let you know that you only get one time to speak on items not on the agenda, but you probably didn't know that, so I'm going to go ahead and let you speak again, but it's generally just once, whether it's advanced or on the day of.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I would like to apologize to the city. When I said that they censored what we presented the last time, I was incorrect, and I appreciate you notifying me of my error, and it's good to know what the facts are there. We'll have to talk to KOCT, and again, I apologize to the city. So, thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Susan Custer?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. I'd like to address comments from the city council meeting on April 19th, when we presented inappropriate books that are in the Oceanside Public School Library. I was just in questioning why council member Eric Joyce stated that a lot of, a lot of information and misinformation was going around about books and what's in the schools. All of the books that we mentioned are in the school libraries and therefore accessible to students as young as 14. Per the website, Destiny and Discovery, all of the following books are in the El Camino High School Library. Gender Queer, All Boys Aren't Blue, Milk and Honey, A Quick and Easy Guide to Queer and Trans Identities, and let's talk about it, The Teens' Guide to Sex Relationships and Being a Human. In addition to stating all of the, that this was misinformation, the books were censored, and I had too thought it was the city doing it, and I appreciate you letting us know how it actually happened. So I would just like to be clear that all adults and children should be treated with respect regardless of their families or their sexual orientation. The reason that we've presented this at city council is because you now have a liaison between the city and the schools, so we're simply asking that you please use your influence to, of the city council to get these books and distractions removed from the schools. To promote Oceanside to be the best that it can be, and our students to be the best they can be, we'd like to see more reading, math, and STEM programs in the school. I'd also just like to end with a quote from thehuffpost.com. It says, "The new research across many countries is showing that the best predictor of future education achievement and life success is reading ability." And one quick quote.
Thank you.
Reading ability. And this is the title of an article, "Why Reading is the Most Important Factor in Your Child's Future Success." That's at medium.com/illumination.
Thank you.
So we'd like to focus on reading. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat Kaye? Followed by Sandra Martinez, followed by Penelope Russell.
I have, Mayor and council have more of a question than a comment tonight, or my comment is a question, and that is, I'm wondering what the plan or emergency plan is for a potential May 12th invasion? And I think you know what I'm talking about, it's been across the news. The U.S. Constitution, Section 8, allows for Congress to repel invasions. However, when the federal government does not do this, then it's in the hands of the people, we the people. I think we had an instance in December where we had busloads of non-Americans. I think we had an instance in December where we had busloads of non-Americans, not citizens coming to our town, and we have enough of a problem as is since COVID let many of the people stay without being incarcerated, since the governor closed many prisons, since the San Diego County City closes or is closing Golden Hall and reduced incarceration for criminals. So we already have a problem. These are just a couple examples within a short radius today. And we do not want -- these are our problems. We do not want it accelerated to this that's in El Paso. This is reported in the New York Post. So I guess the question is, what is the contingency plan for next week, if indeed it does come? Thank you, Jim. In fact, the government has pledged to increase the number of refugees allowed into the U.S. On the streets in El Paso, as you see, they declared on Monday a state of emergency in anticipation of this. If there's nowhere to go there at the border, they're going to be coming up here where the hub of transportation -- I know I have a red light. Where the hub of transportation, they will be coming here. We have the riverbed for them to.
Thank you very much.
So can you come back next week with a plan or let us know? Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra Martinez, followed by Penelope Russell, followed by Kristi Hartig.
You know, we are all very connected with nature, and I think it's really great that you passed the plastic and styrofoam enactment. But we're also really connected to all our neighboring cities. And you know, San Diego, city of San Diego, this last week just voted to close down Golden Hill and sell off Golden Plaza. Golden Hill was a facility that housed 500, provided 500 beds for homeless. Now those people will no longer have a facility to be at. And Oceanside has borne the brunt of a lot of the homeless in San Diego County. We know a lot of times they do manage to come up our way from Del Mar, Carlsbad, and Sinetis. They do end up in Oceanside. So I think it's really wonderful that we have this navigation center that's going to be coming online in August, I believe it is. But that only helps 50 people at a time for about a month's stay, and then they're sent to places that can further assist them. So I'm wondering what we're going to be doing with the extra influx. They're estimating it might be 1,000 or so extra that will no longer have a place to stay in San Diego now that Golden Hill is being shut down. I know in Coronado, the mayor asked that the police enact and do what they could for following state laws, and I know sometimes that is not always possible, but that is one possibility. But it's just something I want to bring to your attention. I hope you come up with a solution, as we already do have quite a homeless situation here. And if there's any way to mitigate exacerbating that, that would really be nice. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Penelope Russell?
Honorable mayor, council members, I'd like to do a little recap of the Laguna Vista -- I'm Penny, or Penelope Russell. I'm the vice president of the HOA for Laguna Vista and also the vice president for OMA, an organization that is, works with manufactured home. So I'd like to do a little recap, an NOI hearing recap that was on, that took place on March 16th, and unfortunately, last month, I wasn't able to make it here. So we understand and appreciate all the work that went into orchestrating the Laguna Vista NOI hearing. We realize the last time an NOI was done was 35 years ago. We know this wasn't an easy task for any of us involved, and we appreciate that the city had the wherewithal to bring in RSG, a consultant, in helping this be orchestrated and accomplish the task. So the following observations I wanted on record from all of us who attended, our legal team, and others that attended from other parks and outside of the area. One is that the hearing wasn't conducted as a normal administrative hearing with witnesses, with witness testimony and documentation introduction as evidence. The hearing was conducted more like a council meeting, which, had our legal team known upfront, they would have prepared differently. When we got here, they were told they had 20 minutes, and it was what? So we suggest that the city include a separate guideline of how an administrative hearing will be performed in the future, and presently, that particular area is not really defined in 16B or what I could find in the Administrative Procedural Guideline. Number two, during the RSG presentation, only figures for low income and very low income were presented. Under the Laguna Vista Regulatory Agreement with the city of Oceanside, there's four formulas for determining the maximum rent allowable for low income and very low income residents with and without mortgage. Many Laguna Vista residents fill out a personal declaration form, and currently, this form does not have a provision for a resident to state whether they have a mortgage or not, which may affect the maximum rents allowable as per our regulatory agreement. It seems there wasn't any consideration for household size, as it appeared in the staff's report at the NOI hearing.
Ms. Russell, could you wrap it up?
Yeah. And moving forward, we would like that issue clarified. Also, one other thing, the -- let's see if I want to do. RSG conducted a lengthy review and ongoing separate dialogue with the park owner, and reference was made by RSG to documents that were never produced at our hearing and which neither Laguna Vista's legal team or presumably the commission ever saw. In the future and in the name of transparency, all parties involved in the hearing should receive all documentation and communication, a minimum, as are suggested, of 30 days prior to the actual hearing. Possibly this issue could be addressed in the NOI process and administrative guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll make sure that we get that. Thank you. Kristi Hartig, followed by Kelly O'Neil.
Good evening, mayor and everybody. I am a Laguna Vista resident, and I am a director of the, also on the HOA. And I have been attending the meetings of city council and Oceanside Manufacturer Home Practice Commission off and on for over a year. I just wanted to point out a few things that I observed during the meetings that you have and the commission has. First, each person on the council and commission have been given the right to think and to make decisions based on their own personal experience, what they think is fair, and not to be influenced by some other board's decision. When there are concerns on an agenda item, or there needs to be more clarification, or there is something that you just don't understand, that item needs to be tabled. No vote, no rush to judgment. Example, the NOI agenda in April was to be treated as a hearing, not a general meeting, and it was clear the commissioners may not have had enough time to review all of the NOI paperwork. What really brought out the point was when it was late and the commissioners were actually saying, "We're tired, let's just vote." At that point, the hearing should have stopped and been tabled for another day with fresh luck, as any meetings that you guys have. The decision ended up costing 270 units, who are seniors, mostly retired, low to lower income, $244,000 a year, plus a capital expenditure of $85,000 payback over nine years. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly O'Neil?
Hello, Madam Mayor and Councilmen. I am Kelly O'Neil. Oceanside is my home. I have two questions tonight. The first one is about the homeless shelter that's going in at the -- it's going in at the old Ocean Shores building, correct? Okay. My mother made that stained glass window that was in the Ocean Shores window, and I noticed it's gone. I'm trying to locate it, so if anyone knows, will you please let me know where it is? And the second question is, our city charters states that we are restoring the principles of self-governance inherent in home rule. So I respectfully am asking Mr. Borrego first, do you understand doctrine of home rule?
Your comments need to be addressed to the city council?
Okay. I apologize.
Not sorry.
Respectfully to Councilman Keim, do you understand the principles, the doctrine of home rule?
We don't respond, yes.
Councilman Joyce?
So make comments.
Okay. Do you understand the doctrine of home rule? Madam mayor, do you understand the doctrine of home rule? Councilman Robinson, do you understand the doctrine of home rule? And Councilman Weiss, do you understand the doctrine of home rule? And thank you so much.
Thank you.
concludes the speakers.
Thank you very much. We are now on general council member comments. Councilmember Joyce?
Just very briefly, because it was on the record, I do want to say that characterizing refugees or migrants as an invasion of our country is, it's a scary way to characterize people who are seeking a better life, and I just want to be very careful about having that out there.
Thank you. Tomorrow, we have National Day of Prayer, and that is at 6 o'clock at Heritage Park. So if you can come, please, please do join us. This Saturday, we do have Heritage Park Day, and that is 12 to 4 p.m. So please come on up for that. On Saturday, September 13th, we have, at 12 to 4, we have the dedication, actually named dedication, of Prince Park. And again, that's 12 to 4 with the actual ceremony at 2 o'clock. And then later on that day, Saturday, May 13th, we have the Miss Oceanside Scholarship Contest, well, actually, Miss Oceanside Contest with Miss Teen Oceanside, and that's at 6 to 8 at the Star Theater. You've got to come for that. It is just so wonderful to see these young ladies respond to the questions and really, you know, looking forward to being ambassadors for us, for our city of Oceanside. And that is it. I'm going to adjourn to Wednesday, to the next meeting, which is Wednesday, May 17, 3:30 p.m. And as it's said under Star Wars, right, may the fourth be with you.